I'm going to call the Board of Aldermen meeting, except for order, on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, here in the classroom at the National Police Department. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering, and Alderman O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call and roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gaffery.
Present.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
We have 15 in attendance.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Fulton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Well, first, thank you again to the Police Department for hosting us here at the police station while the City Hall's being fixed, so I want to thank PD. I have a couple of items this evening, Madam Chair, Madam President. First, I wanted to ask you to consider passing R-20022, which is on the agenda, under a suspension of the rules. What this would do is provide funds for the city to deal with the coronavirus situation. Bobby Bagley, the Director of Public Health and Community Services, is here and has been very active in terms of helping us, along with Justin Cates, develop an action plan addressing all the health issues that are currently pending, trying to make decisions about how we should proceed. But as we have seen events of the last few days, Harvard and MIT both closed. We've seen other changes made with respect to scheduling, a lot of cancellations. We are trying to foresee events that the city may have to deal with. First, we do need to buy supplemental cleaning supplies, things we don't usually do, wipe down all City Services and City Hall, things like that. But also, we have to think about the possibility that City Hall could be closed or that a number of people are not at work and need to work remotely. Justin Cates and all of the department division heads are defining the city's essential services. Some of those include, for example, payroll. City Hall, we need to meet payroll no matter what. So in order to fulfill those essential functions, we may need to have people work remotely. Now, that is, it really doesn't happen that often. A few of the division directors typically work remotely, but that is not done on a large scale, especially a whole group of people doing it at the same time. We have a limited number of Citrix licenses, which is the software license that enables someone to get on the system remotely. We may need to acquire more Citrix licenses. In addition, we may need to acquire additional laptops for people to take home and work from home if they are needed for essential functions. And so I have asked in R-20022 for you to, on a suspension of the rules basis, pass that resolution, which would transfer $50,000 for the use of the city in terms of dealing with the coronavirus issues. This may not be enough, maybe, hopefully, we won't need it, but it at least will help us defray some of the expenses if some events that could happen do happen in the next few weeks. So I would ask that you consider passing that under suspension of the rules. Now, the next item is one that you see on your desks, which in this case, I would ask just you to accept the budget, the budget resolution, which is our normal procedure, under a suspension and referred, of course, to the Budget Committee. It's not on your, the full budget is not on your desk yet, but they tell me it's going to be here by 10 to 8. They're binding it right now, so you should have it by the end of the meeting. But overall, I can give you an outline of what's contained therein. The budget as proposed, the core budget, is $284 million, which is up 3.25% over last year. As we've discussed a number of times, the main issue in the budget is the $3 million increase of healthcare costs this year, 8.6%, after, as you will recall, a $3.3 million increase last year. Those two years together, $6 million, equate to a 3% increase in the tax rate just on those two, on that line item alone. Putting aside healthcare, the budget is up about 2.1%. The budget also allocates, proposes the expenditure of the $4.7 million in temporary aid. This will be the last year of that, unless it's somehow renewed, that the state legislature provided us in the last session. And I will, and I have, following the recommendations of the School Department and some of our own, have proposed that those funds be used to fund one-time, non-recurring items, so that we don't devote money that we know or we suspect may not come again to operating budgets, building operating budgets that we wouldn't be able to sustain in the future. The overall, now we have the wastewater and the enterprise funds. Those are up $500,000. The wastewater and solid waste enterprise funds, those are up $500,000 and $1 million respectively. Those are separately dealt with in the budget as always. Those are not truly discretionary budgets because all of those expenditures are required by regulations, both from the state DES and the federal EPA. So we are continuing to meet our obligations with respect to environmental regulation. Overall, the objective of the budget is to try to balance a few things. Number one, to pay the healthcare costs. Number two, to provide quality services for our citizens. And number three, to keep, under these circumstances, property tax increases to a minimum. Now, Nashville's economy is growing and has been healthy and strong, but we do know that it could be affected by the coronavirus situation. So many things are happening that that is another reason for caution here. We do know that many people are living paycheck to paycheck, having difficulty meeting ends meet. Therefore, at the beginning of the budget process back in January, the financial team and I proposed budget guidelines of 2.25% for the Police Department, for the Fire Department, and for the School Department, and 2% for all other departments. Working together, all of us, we have limited tax increases over the last four years to an average of 2.6%. But this year, given the challenges that we're facing, the financial team is projecting that if the budget is passed as proposed, the taxes will go up no more than 4.5%, which is, of course, more than we would wish, more than we would like. Looking at some of the individual budgets, the School Department has proposed an increase of 2.8%, which is about $600,000 over the 2.25% guideline. The Police Department, 3.2%, which is about $200,000 over the guideline. And the Fire Department, 5.1%, which is about $1.5 million over the 2.25% guideline. But given the considerations that I've mentioned, the tax rate and the other things we're trying to balance, I have reduced the budgets accordingly down to the 2.25% level to try to manage the situation that we have. There are two exceptions to that statement. One, the overtime cost for, in the PD, for uniformed officers and for civilian dispatchers who are necessary to fill vacant dispatch and communication positions. There's a lot of overtime being spent there because we have a number of vacant communications and dispatcher positions. The underlying problem is the low level of pay that is provided to these employees. So we've been working with the Police Department through the Chief and Deputy Testaverde to talk about how to raise those wages to fill the positions and therefore stop using so much overtime. There are funds, therefore, in contingency for the Police Department in addition to the 2.25% to handle those raises. And in the end, that may save money because by reducing overtime, we may save more on that end than we spend on the additional wages. Number two, within the one-time funds allocated for the School Department, I followed most of their recommendations, but I have proposed that we spend $200,000 for the pay and benefits for at least three ELL teachers. We, as you know, the School Department is under a Department of Justice audit with respect to the ELL program, and that is certainly something we want to address. We want to make sure we're serving our students who come to school not speaking English, and we also want to help the School Department make sure that they succeed with respect to that audit. So that would be an exception and is over and above the 2.25% for the School Department. We are taking aggressive steps to bend the curve on the rising healthcare costs. We have developed some plan, design changes, which if rolled out to all of the employees through all of the union contracts and non-union employees, would save considerable money. They also would encourage people to go into the high deductible plans, which is a very good option for people because the city pays them to go into the high deductible plan and therefore creates a lot of incentive for them to manage and save on healthcare costs. That money gets rolled over year to year, so there's a lot to be gained by the employee going to the high deductible plan. In any event, you'll be hearing more about those details in the near future. In terms of the one-time temporary aid expenditures, following the recommendations of the School Department, there is $700,000 to replace all of the Chrome books for the students, which are becoming obsolete. There's $415,000 of startup costs for moving, for the startup expenses to move pre-K into the former Christian School Building on Franklin Street, as well as to create the possibility that that building could also later house the Brentwood facility, which we pay rent for. So in the end, this would be a very strong step for the School Department. There's also money proposed for technology upgrades at the elementary and high schools that are needed for good internet access. And there's $175,000 for an upgrade of the middle school science curriculum. I did make a couple of changes. First, I did increase the amount for school furniture because of reports that we have desks and chairs in many schools that are broken, from 60 to 250,000. And I, as I suggested, I allocated $200,000 for salaries and benefits for three more ELL teachers. With respect to the one-time aid that we are receiving with respect to city projects, the main allocations are to the Library Plaza Park that is partially funded at this time, as well as to the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, or CERF. Of course, the budget continues. A lot of our longer-term projects, the paving plan of action, which should reach about 30 miles, 25 to 30 miles of streets with paving this year, plus crack ceiling of another 30 or 40 miles. We are continuing to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant and replace aging sewer lines. Of course, we are working on the replacement of the Elm Street Middle School with the new school down on Buckminster Road. And again, I mentioned the Library Plaza project, which would be, is one of the things that would be funded through the one-time aid. So those are the overall, that's the overall picture of the budget. Of course, I'll come to the Budget Committee and talk through the details when that's appropriate. And you should be receiving the budget books before the end of the meeting. They told me by 10 to 8. It's now 13 to 8, so hopefully they'll be here.
Donna just got called, so.
What?
Donna just got called.
So maybe they're here now?
They're here.
Finally, Madam President, one issue that has come up is the Eaton Street Bridge along the rail trail. Public Works believes that that will be finished within two weeks. So that's an important bridge for people getting around downtown, and Alderman Lopez has been asking about that, so we do believe it will be finished in fairly short order. And Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor. I'll start over here. Alderman Lou.
Could you just explain why we approve this budget at this point?
Well, we're not approving it. We're simply allowing it to be introduced and referred to the Budget Committee because you see it's not on the agenda. So we would just accept it and refer it to the budget.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Alderman Gaffrey.
I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. You talked about Franklin Facility. A startup for pre-K and Brentwood possibly being together?
The first step would be to lease part of the building for the pre-K, which the School Department believes could save some money. And ultimately, the entire building might be used for the pre-K and for Brentwood. Maybe the city could entertain various options, continue to lease the building, possibly buy it. But we know we spend a lot of money on Brentwood. It's another, so there are various, and it's a downtown location, so there are various alternatives the city could pursue, the School Department could pursue once they gain a foothold through the initial lease of part of the building.
Alderman Dowd.
On the legislation for the budget, it gets introduced tonight. It gets referred to the Budget Committee. At the Budget Committee, we talk about it at the first meeting, then we table it. For every successive budget meeting, bring it back off the table. Until we're done all the budget review meetings, and at that point in time, we take a vote to send it back to the full board of the recommendation. And I believe the date for the final reading is June 2nd? Somewhere in June. I think it's June 2nd. Could be wrong, but right about that time.
Alderman Lopez.
So, Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you for working hard to get us the budget on our desk before we actually have to. I wanted to know about the expenses that we're talking about for the School District and the, particularly the supplies that we were talking about. Is the grant writer that we added in last year's budget focusing on these? Because it's kind of in my experience that you're more likely to find grant support for, support for supplies and infrastructure. You definitely won't find it for any, like, staffing or HR needs. But is that, like, buying desks, seats, or desks, chairs, is that something that they might be able to help offset the expense from?
Well, this grant writer is working with the School Department on the number of possibilities. The desks and chairs are not something we're likely to get a grant for. I mean, I'd be glad to ask her, but that would be my impression. You know, the, those are usually more ambitious things than simply, you know, getting additional chairs or replacing chairs and desks.
And then my last question was, although it's within two weeks, is everybody put a sign up on Palm Street? Because people, it's like an 800-foot walk, and that's partly why people are getting so frustrated because you can't visibly tell from the road when you're walking down the rail trail whether or not the bridge is open or not. So people are going all the way down there and then having to turn around. And I've heard some people are getting impatient and trying to climb down, so that's a little dangerous.
I would be glad to talk to Public Works about that.
Thank you.
One bite at the apple, Alderman Dowd, but I'll.
That's coming. But just, I don't know if you wanted to explain that the School Department is still, the Board of Education is still reviewing their budget, and they got a public hearing on their budget. I don't have any idea at this point what that number is going to differ from the superintendent's. So what you have in here is the superintendent's budget.
Correct.
Okay. Recognition period.
Davis Nag.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of February 25th and February 26th, 2020, accepted, placed, unfilled, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications been received from Lori Wilshire, President, Board of Aldermen, regarding Special Board of Aldermen public hearings conducted on Resolution R-20017, a petition for street discontinuance for a portion of Palm Street, and a petition for street renumbering for a portion of Elmont Street.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications, place them on file.
Communication received from Larry D. Goodyeu, CEO of Penetech Corporation, regarding notice of annual meeting of sole shareholder and proxy statement.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and refer it to the Penetech Water Special Committee. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to accept the communication that we had on our desk this evening from John Ford regarding the last call. I believe he's with Headler's. Communication is under desk. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two signed up. Selectman Stacy Lawton.
I'm Selectman Stacy Marie Lawton, AD Elm Street, Unit 1, right here in Nashville. Tonight, actually, I was only initially coming to speak about one thing. Then I noticed, do you want to extend the last call? Now, I live in Woodford. We see a lot of different things. We see addiction. We see lots of people suffering from alcoholism. And I really feel like, in the city, that's, I mean, I'm not saying like, that, you know, every business owner wants to make some more money. But I mean, when we're suffering from terrible addiction in the city, such as alcoholism, drugs, and whatnot, I really don't think we should be extending the time in which we sell alcohol, not at a store, not at a bar. Now, I'm Irish. Everybody knows Irish like to drink. But even I have to hold back sometimes. And there's no way I need to drink until 2:00 in the morning. Maybe on New Year's Eve, we could drink till midnight. You know, but that's, I really don't think we need to extend it right now. I mean, maybe with some more study. But I mean, I'm not sitting here saying that the, you know, business owners are going to be like, "Well, we'd like to make some more money." To be honest, I'd like to make some more money too, but not like this, you know? And that's what I have to say on that issue. Also, welcome to the 21st century. The Board of Aldermen is considering changing what it'll call itself. We're changing the, we've renovated City Hall in recent years. We're renovating the Aldermanic Chamber. Now it's time that we renovate the name. Now, I mean, I'm sorry, I saw some comments on TV. Some Aldermen had said, "Well, let's leave it the way it is." I'm tired of leaving things the way they are. If you're non-binary, why should you be called "min"? If you're a woman, why should you be called "min"? You know, I'm openly transgender. I've served in office before, and I'm currently serving in a city position. Even my ID tag that's given to us election officials says "Select Min." I'm a woman, they should be like "Select Woman." I really feel like this board has an opportunity to make a bold statement, you know, and all the board, all the women, all the men, all the person. That's, you know, we need to bring the Board of Aldermen in line with the 21st century. And I strongly suggest that you take a stand. Sorry, Buck, for the folks that feel as though that we should just leave things the way they are. Again, I'm tired of leaving things the way they are. And the Board of Aldermen has an opportunity to make a statement and kind of make itself more LGBT-friendly. And so again, I strongly support the passage of you changing what you call yourselves. What if there's a non-binary person that comes to this board? They don't want to be called "min." They don't want to be called "woman." They want to be a person, you know? I'm transgender. I identify as she, hers and hers. And so if I happen to someday serve on this board, I don't know, but no, I'm not taking your job, Tom. But I just, you know, I feel as though that we really need to, you know, be in line with, you know, the way the LGBT community would be more accepting. And this would be putting the board in line and being more accepting. Again, I'm sorry to the board members that might not agree, but it's time, you know? It's time that we, you know, that we do this. And, you know, that's all I have to say on this issue, and I've signed up for the next comment period. But that's what I have to say, and I just hope that you do make the change tonight. Thank you.
Fred Thibault.
Good evening. My name is Fred Thibault. I live at 24 Cheyenne Drive. That's Ward 1. I want to comment on O-20005, which is the titles of members from the board. This proposed ordinance is a prime example of political correctness con besurk. The ordinance says "May," meaning. This is permissive text, but is meaningless as a directive. No future board can be held to procedural practices of a current board. It's well-established. This is therefore a completely meaningless ordinance. New Hampshire state law and national charter law is not changed with this ordinance. So what about elections when you run either for Alderman or Alderman-at-Large? How does that relate to older woman or older person that you may want to call yourself? Several Aldermen in the Administrative Affairs Committee prefer to be called counselor, according to the minutes. These members show a lack of understanding of the three forms of municipal government in New Hampshire, namely, city councils with appointed city manager. Eleven of the 13 cities in New Hampshire have that form of government. Board of Aldermen with an elected mayor. Call it a strong mayor. Two cities in New Hampshire. Two cities in Hampshire, Manchester and Nashua, have that form of government. And Board of Selectmen for towns, which only have a town meeting, and all the towns, almost a couple of hundred have that form of government. You cannot muddle these legally well-defined government structures and positions with some arbitrary naming convention. But this raises an interesting question. Possibly Nashua should change to a city council form of government, same as 11 of the 13 cities in Hampshire, and replace the elected mayor with an appointed manager with demonstrated This was actually recommended in a 1994-1995 period, prompted by an independent contractual study of government and financial mismanagement at that time in Nashua. And that recommendation to go to a council form of government, appointed manager, was endorsed by then-mayor, Rob Wagner. I was an Alderman at the time. This approach would provide professional management instead of elected mayors who may have absolutely no executive experience. I'm not talking about the current mayor necessarily, but there have been mayors, you can start with Rob Wagner, who had no executive experience whatsoever.
Point of order. This is not on the agenda.
This could be, I appreciate not being interrupted, I'm on the old.
Changing us to a city council is not on the agenda.
This could be accomplished with a charter change submitted to Nashville's voters as an Aldermanic initiative. As far as I know, FRS A49B does not require legislative approval. It requires a charter change voted on by citizens of Nashua. The political correct fanatics on this board could then be elected and refer to themselves as gender-neutral counselors. Thank you.
Mr. Focus, did you miss the sign-up sheet?
I did.
Would you like to speak?
I would.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Billy Focus. I own Martha's Exchange in downtown Nashua. I've been in the restaurant and bar business for 32 years. Maybe a little too long. I'm here to speak against the 2:00, the 2:00 AM proposal. I've seen, I know how this business works. People come in, get there about 11:00, 11:30. They're pre-gaming. Sure you all know what that means? And then at 1:00 AM, it's last call. What I see happening is even more pre-gaming, more drinking, going till 2:00. I see absolutely nothing but trouble coming from this. I also think our fine police department wouldn't appreciate it. I know my employees wouldn't appreciate it. I don't appreciate it, so I would like you to think hardly before we make that decision. Thanks very much, and appreciate it too, Lori. Thank you.
These makeshift accommodations, I know. We are grateful for them, though. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Doria Brown, Energy Manager. Preapproval to enter into contracts with third-party suppliers for natural gas and electricity supplies.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to accept, place on file, and authorize the Energy Manager to enter into contracts with third-party suppliers for natural gas and electricity supplies.
Heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication's been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract for 2020 paving program, Contract 1.
Alderwoman Lou.
I move to accept and place on file and award the contract for 2020 paving program, Contract 1, which is in excess of $1 million, to Sunshine Paving Corporation.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract for 2020 paving program, Contract 2.
Alderman Harry Gathroy.
Madam President, I move to accept and place on file and award the contract for the 2020 paving program, Contract 2, which is in excess of $1 million to Sunshine Paving Corporation.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Motion from, the motion, excuse me. Communication's been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract for 2020 sewer replacement project.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract for 2020 sewer replacement project, which is in excess of $1 million, to Sir Construction West.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract award for single-stream recycling, Amendment Number 2, two-year extension.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract for single-stream recycling, Amendment Number 2, for a two-year extension to Gasella Recycling LLC in an amount not to exceed $400,000.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint Convention with the Library Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Aldermen meet in joint convention with the Library Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing a trustee, and I call for nominations.
My name is David Pincedo, Secretary of the National Public Library Board of Trustees, and I proudly nominate Linda Laflamme as a member for a seven-year term.
There being no objection, I will close the nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Cleaver.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Dowd.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Karen.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Clemmons.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Lopez.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Tenza.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderwoman Lou.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Jettie.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Schmidt.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Laws.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Cleaver.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Linda Laflamme.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Linda Laflamme.
Trustee Bergeron. Trustee Epesbeesha. Trustee Jackworth. Trustee Kane. Trustee Kunapiridi. Trustee Laflame. Trustee Pincedo.
Yes, and I'm sorry that my colleagues are not here tonight. There's been some sickness and travel issues.
Mayor Donches.
Linda Laflamme.
We have 18 for trustee Linda Laflamme.
And that motion carries. I declare Linda Laflamme duly appointed to the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire March 31st, 2027. Would you please come forward to take the oath of office?
Right in here, sorry. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the National Public Library, according to the best of your abilities and agreeable to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
There being no objection, I will declare that the joint convention now arise. Appointments by the mayor.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Penny Peroudy, 2 West Ray Drive, Nashua, as an ultimate member to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire March 31st, 2023, and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 24th, 2020 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 26th, 2020 Special Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 2nd Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 4th, 2020 Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following conservation, to the Conservation Commission. Reappointment of Jean Porter, 77 Concord Street, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31st, 2022. An appointment of a new alternate, Carol Sarno, 15 Rocky Hill Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire February 28th, 2023. Those individuals here, please come forward. Take the oath of office.
Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member and alternate member of the Conservation Commission of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following appointments to the Cultural Connections Committee. Rosemary Ford, 22 Nova Road, Nashua, with a term to expire March 1st, 2022. Donna Marso, 37 Pinewood Road, Hudson. And Cecilia Liberry, 229 Main Street, Nashua, with terms to expire February 28th, 2023. For any of those individuals here to be sworn in this evening, please come forward, Donna.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cultural Connections Committee of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Energy and Environment Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following appointments to the Energy and Environment Committee. Gary Lambert, 32 Columbia Ave., Nashua. Bob Hayden, 84 Dutton Road, Lineboro. And Sylvie Stewart, 44 Spring Cove Road, Nashua. All with terms to expire January 31st, 2023. Any of those individuals here this evening, please come forward for the oath of office.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Energy and Environment Committee of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Nashua Airport Authority. There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Jessica Holland, 34 Franklin Street, Nashua, to the Nashua Airport Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2024. Ms. Jessica, oh, you are here this evening. Please come forward for the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of the Nashua Airport Authority, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
National Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Helen Honorow, 46 Raymond Street, Nashua, to the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority with a term to expire October 14th, 2024.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority, according to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
Second reading of Resolution R 2012, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,100,000 for the Public Health and Community Services Division building renovations.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Resolution 20-012 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage of 20-12 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 20-12 is clearly adopted. Unfinished Business Ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O 2000-1, extending the hours of sale of alcoholic beverages by on-premises licensees to 2:00 AM.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to amend O 2000-1 by replacing it with the proposed Goldenrod Amendment made at the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to amend by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy. Is there discussion on that? Alderman Clemmons.
What the Goldenrod copy does is it adds a 90-day, it basically says that legislation will take effect 90 days following its passage.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move for final passage of O 2000-1 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of the ordinance 21 as amended. Discussion? Alderman Laws.
So, I'll try to be brief about this. I consciously attempted to stay neutral on this because of the fact that I'm a bartender downtown and have been for 20 years. And I waited for people to call me who I knew so they'd discuss it. Nobody called. And then last night, I had the pleasure of enjoying an adult cocktail with Alderman Clemmons, and we discussed this. And he had moved me towards his side of the discussion. So today, before I made a decision in haste, I decided to dip into my phone contacts, and I did an informal phone bank of all of the bar owners that I know in Nashua. And not one of them is for this. So granted, I didn't talk to everybody, but I spoke to Mr. Focus from Martha's, I talked to the owner of O'Brien/Oddfellow's, my boss, the owner of Panucci's, the owners of Foddy's Tavern, and then the message I got from John Plouffe, the manager at others' daughter. Some of them are a little bit more, you know, indifferent to it. Most of them are against it altogether. And along with all of the personal problems that I had with this, such as overnight parking being a big issue, they ticket starting at midnight, bars are open until 2:00, that's obviously a big issue that needs to be addressed, the fact that there is a tremendous amount of responsibility and liability on the servers and bartenders and establishment owners in New Hampshire versus the people who are actually the ones committing crimes, getting, you know, drunk, not being responsible. And I had spoken to a couple of my colleagues who are at the State House and agree with me and are willing to look at that. I appreciate Alderman Clemmons. I appreciate Alderman Clemmons wanting to do this, and I think that he has a compelling argument. But if the argument is that this is something that is going to give restaurant owners more options, and the restaurant owners don't want that option, then I think it kind of kills the entire idea for me. So because of that, I am going to vote against this.
Alderman Tenza and then Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. And so I've thought a lot higher about this as well. And I think that ultimately where I come down, for a new of Mr. Focus, Mr. Plort's comments on this with downtown business always wanted that, you know, for me, it's really a lot of it comes down to a public health issue with increased hours, extended hours of sales of alcohol. I think that it would only make sense that it would increase the responsibility of some people in the incidences of drunk driving, drunk driving accidents. Now, and also, you know, anyone who paid attention to the news as of late will have noticed that there are plenty, have been plenty of studies which have shown that U.S. deaths, especially around young people for liver-related disease, is on the rise. And I think that we've done a good job here in the city of trying to promote a healthy and resilient city. I think this maybe sends the wrong message. You know, finally, I will say too, I know that there's been some comments that the casinos want this to increase their business costs, give back more money to nonprofits. However, as Mr. Plort points out, casinos are limited to 1:00 for their games of chance. So they wouldn't be able to extend the hours of the casino, they would only extend the hours of an hour bar, thus making that more money, but not necessarily giving that. So for all those reasons, I'll be going against this.
Alderman Lopez.
I have comments to make, but first I want to ask Attorney Bolton only because Alderman Laws brought it up in his comments. Is there any conflict of interest if his employer or as a bartender, if he votes?
No.
Okay. So I just want to get that out of the way. And the second thing is, kind of already went around this circle in the past when we tried this the first time. And I understand the point of the bartenders and the business owners that are opposed to doing it, but I don't see anything in the ordinance that compels a restaurant to stay open until 2:00. I think they can all set their own hours. I know some like Fratello's do close early because they don't want to deal with a late-night crowd. I think with regards to responsible drinking, the majority, as far as I know, the majority of emergency calls and overdrinking happens at home where there is unsupervised drinking. I know that's not necessarily a responsibility that bartenders want to take on or business owners, but they are trained and they are accountable to what they serve for people. So going out in public adds an extra step. So I don't necessarily think that not raising the timeframe until 2:00 is going to make a positive impact. I've been in cities where like the alcohol curfews like 10, and that there's definitely still a lot of drinking happening. It's just happening under the radar and in casual settings. So I'm still pretty indifferent on this. I'm listening to business owners who say that they don't want to be forced to do this, but I don't see anything in the ordinance that mandates a restaurant to stay open until 2:00.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I've had a long history with this particular ordinance. First started in the New Hampshire State House, being a representative. I supported it and voted it. I felt that it was up to each individual community to make their own particular decision with this. And when I saw it in our office, as you can look, I'm the number two name that supported it. But since then, I've received, I did some research on it, went out there and took it upon myself to do an experiment talking to a lot of bartenders. It was a tough assignment, but.
So you asked before too?
I did do it. But the thing is, I agree, this is a totally enabling legislation that you could say, well, it's up to the bar owner if he chooses to stay open, but is it? It's not enabling, as somebody has not mentioned yet, really to the employees. If you are an employee in the bar business, does, there's nothing there in protection of the employee where the bar owner must come back to the employees and say, how do you vote on staying open until 2:00? I've had some people say, you know, the bar, being a bartender, isn't really my primary job. He, you know, takes his position as part, like a second, moonlighting type of job. He's still expected to get up and work the next day. I'm not against, I think the Nashville Police Department could handle the 2:00 license. I firmly believe, not from personal experience, but if you're drunk at 1:00, you're just as drunk at 2:00. But the thing is, I think we've got to think of the employee and when it comes down to it. And maybe in the future when we look at this, because this goes as part of the puzzle if we start to get into performing art center, and we can address this again at that particular time and perhaps make a decision really we would like to go. But at this particular time, and then last but not least, it does come down as another dangling paws to go with the parking of 2:00. Right now, it is 2:00. I wouldn't be objective to looking, but we do have a study that is pending that's going to come out. So maybe it's just not the right time for this. Maybe we should wait and take another peek at it, perhaps maybe next year. And I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly and then Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. We talked excessively in committee about this, and there were a lot of points brought up. The two things that stick in my mind is the liability piece, I brought that up, and also it echoed in the piece that we got from the gentleman of Panucci's. As a bartender, maybe everyone knows this, but as a bartender or server, if someone comes onto your premises and they are drunk and you continue to serve them, that liability is now all on you. So I think that employees have undue hardship with this, especially, one of the things I said at the committee meeting was, people do get in their car and go to the next city that's open. That does happen. And so I don't, I think putting that liability on the bartenders is just not fair. Of course, it is up to the business owners, but then my second point is, where are the business owners? When we did the tobacco ordinance, they lined up and they came in to us with what they thought about this, but other than Mr. Focus and the one email, I didn't get a single call or email saying, we need this desperately, it'll change my business, this is an economic surplus that I'm really looking forward to. So I would look forward to it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Given that you, what it sounds like is that people want to continue to force me to go down to Tingsborough till 2:00, I'm going to change my motion to recommend indefinite postponement of O-20001.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Discussion on that. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. Did, was there an establishment that was interested in taking advantage of this extension?
I'll throw it to Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Clemmons.
There were several. And they were in the downtown, south end, and north end.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of ordinance O-20003, authorizing stop signs on Beacon, Beard, Highland, and Locust Streets at their intersection with Auburn Street.
Alderman Laws.
Oh, sorry, I got distracted there. I move to, for final passage of O-20003.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 20-003. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Ordinance 20-003 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance O-2005, relative to titles of members of the board.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move to amend ordinance 2005 by replacing it with the proposed Goldenrod Amendment made at the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to amend with the Goldenrod copy. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. The amendment that was made at the committee strikes the last sentence of this, which is, whenever possible, members of the Board of Alderman will be known collectively as alderperson. So instead, the ordinance would just read, members of the Board of Alderman may choose to be referred to as alderman, alderwoman, or alderperson.
Further discussion on the amendment? Alderman Lopez.
Couldn't we just collectively call ourselves the Board as well?
We're the Boards.
That was my comment.
Alderman Kelly.
I'll try to answer it. That was actually my comment too, either the Board or alderboard. We were talking a lot about whether we can kind of fix the title so that it still works. But since I have the floor, I'll just finish what I was going to say as well. I've talked a lot about this since the meeting, because we've talked about a lot of it as well. Where I'm glad is that it doesn't harm, it doesn't harm, we're doing it now. The only thing it does is good, it opens it up and allows people who might feel that they're not included to feel it. So it really, saying yes or no is not that good.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I think that discussion was not involving the amendment. I think that was.
Sorry.
Full motion, so.
Sorry, I thought we already moved on.
Point that out. We haven't voted on the amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move for final passage of O-2005 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 2005 as amended. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I brought this forward to really start a discussion in this city about what we can do to start making things more equal. As my colleague had stated before me, this is really something that is pretty simple for us to be able to do. Just gives the individual the opportunity to be referred to as something that they deem to be respectful. Unfortunately, you know, our state law does not allow us to have a charter change to become a city council because we have a strong form of government insofar as the mayor is concerned. I believe in that government. I don't propose changing that government. What I would hope is that some of the folks around this horseshoe can work to try to allow the state to differentiate between a city council that is a weak city council and a city council that is a strong city council. And simply have us change the title. That, since that was not able to be done, this is the furthest that I believe we can go. And I think we should do it. So with that, obviously, I will be supporting this.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you. A couple of statements. We do currently call ourselves aldermen or alderwomen, and if there was someone that was binary or someone, I would hope that we would all accept alderperson. Having said that, I don't see the harm in putting this in writing and making it official so someone would feel welcome without meaning if they had to kind of trouble or ask. I don't have a problem with that. I'm glad that it was struck as well where it said, whenever possible, the Board of Alderperson, because I think that kind of leaves a gray area. I disagree with this being a prime example of political correctness going in reserve. I think it's just, we do want to be all-inclusive and so on. And I think we do make a statement because we do allow alderwoman issues, and I prefer to call them. So I think we allow it, all the children, what we want, but this would be good official. But on a side note, I spoke to the Deputy Secretary of State, because one of the conversations that came up was our ballot, it said alderman. You know, is that going to be confusing? He said, as long as we leave it as aldermen, there's no issue. He also said there would not be a problem if we decided to be the Board of Alderperson. He said he felt it would be more confusing, but that we could do it and that wouldn't require a charter change, but anything else would require some kind of a charter change in some way. I'm going to support it. I don't think it's necessary, but I do think it makes people feel that they feel more welcome. I will, I will support that. But I think we're already doing it, and I give us credit for that.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. I too did a little research up in Concord, and I found out in 2008, I think, that they changed the law to allow selectmen, as government of towns, were allowed to change it so that they were select women, select persons. They didn't change the name of the Board itself, but they just simply allowed it. So it's passed into law. Why they didn't do the Board of Aldermen at the same time, I have no idea, but we can certainly do this. We can take care of this next year. So I see absolutely no problem with this in preparation for the change that we see coming. Although, yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I don't have any, two years ago, when people wanted to be called alderwoman, we had no problem with changing it, making the name tags. And I have, under the circumstances, no problem calling someone alderperson. I just don't think we need legislation to do it. Because if you have legislation, somebody slips and they break in the law. And I think that in another two years, somebody could come on, they could come on and change it. I think we have more legislation already that we don't need. So I think if the boards are meaningful to use those titles for anybody that wants them on their tag, that's fine. I just don't think we need the legislation.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. The reason that we need the legislation is because we have people in our community who have served in this position before attacking this very legislation. And if people of that mind were to get elected to this board simultaneously with somebody who would prefer to be called an alderperson, passing this now would require them to go through the rigor morale of rescinding the ordinance, which would be embarrassing for them. And so that's why it's important that we pass this now, because if a future board decides that they, that this is too politically correct for them, then they're more than, more than, they can be more than happy to submit a legislation to rescind the ordinance, but they would have to go through that process and the public would be made aware of it. And so that's why it's important that we pass this tonight.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I think it was Shakespeare who said, a rose by any other name would still be a rose. And the thing is, when you come down to it, what are we really doing here? We're changing a name. Okay? So up at the State House, we had a really big issue. And what the big issue is, what do people really want to call themselves? So when it came down to licenses, now when you do your driver's license, you have to clarify your sex. You could either be a male or female, or the, were the traditional choices. But we, in my committee, approved a non-binary that you could be X if you so choose. Okay? That was doing something. Changing the name is not doing much. Coming out with a statement from this particular board that says, we as aldermen do not support any discrimination based on race, color, sex, or creed, or orientation, sexual orientation, that would be making a statement, not changing a name. I wish, I'm not going to support this because it's just a name change, but I would definitely support, and I throw myself right behind. just a name change. But I would definitely support, and I throw myself right behind, trying, I don't care what people call, but let's be unified as a board and say, "We're a welcoming city, and we want to support that everybody from all walks of the city feel welcome to serve on this board regardless of what your title." The title means nothing. Again, a rose is just a rose by any other name. When you come here, nondiscriminatory.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you.
Question.
So I'm going to start by clarifying one thing. There was a comment that there was in discussion at the committee that we wanted it to be city council, and we didn't realize that that was how it was set up in the state. That was not the case at all. There was discussion that city councillor is non-gender specific, and we really appreciate that from that perspective, but also because people know what a city councillor is. I tell people who have an Alderman or an Alderwoman, and people's eyes glaze over. You know, I think they point out that two cities in the whole state are, are Board of Aldermen. I appreciate the perspectives of everyone on this board, but I would like to remind people that the board didn't always look like this. I, one of the things I talk about when I talk about our board is how proud I am that we are a true representation of our city. We have seven women. We have four or five people under age forty. We have two people of color. Board didn't always look like this. And there was a reason why my sign said Alderwoman, because if there's a little girl in Nashville who wants to be on our board, I want her to know that she can be. So it's not just a name.
Alderman Lopez, and then Alderman Tenza.
Well, I understand and appreciate the eloquence of Alderman McBrien's comments regarding names. I think they do make a difference. I know we've already had a debate, and, you know, half of us were on the board when we decided whether or not to remove the word man from the end of chair in all of the committee roles. And the apparently persuasive argument was that if we, if we remove the word man from it, people might think we're talking about furniture and the minutes. I think whatever gymnastics we go through to justify continuing to do things the way they always are flies in the face of progress. I think this does no harm. It just enables and empowers somebody to feel a little bit more welcome. And I would argue that if it makes someone feel more welcome, then it is needed. To Alderman Clemens' point, we did, we do set up a standard and a precedent for future boards. And they do have the authority to remove it if they feel passionately enough and if they can persuade their fellow board members to do so, then they can do so. But that would be a very intrusive argument. And I hate to say it, but I think this is a pretty intrusive argument for people who are non-binary or not of equal gender privilege because we're talking about their right to be called what they want to be called, a right that many of us have already, and they don't. So, I mean, I agree with Alderman O'Brien, and I was kind of poking fun when I called him McBrien before. But I do think we should make a statement of equality. But at the same time, I do think people can be very sensitive to names and how they're presented. And given that the word Alder means older, I would just argue that anybody who thinks there is no sensitive issue here, would you prefer to be called senior or elder?
Alderman Tenza.
So I may be the fifth person that Alderman Kelly referred to as being under forty for a couple more months, so. You know, I did a little research, too, just to, just to see around the country who else, where else the Board of Alderperson is found. And what I found, that the areas where this is used, or in the Midwest, do not strike me as being, you know, extremely progressive areas for that it's used as, in a way that it's meant to be. Anything out of that respect will subject people who are serving on the board. Just a quick Google search shows that Burns Mill, Missouri, Crystal Lake Park, Missouri, a number of towns in Wisconsin all refer to their board as, as either Alderpersons or the Board of Alderpersons. So I think this is, you know, kind of bringing us up with the times. And as Alderman Kelly stated before, Alderman Clemens has stated, you know, makes it more inclusive for anyone who wants to think about serving on the board.
Alderman Loz, and then Alderman Juddy.
So there's nothing I can contribute that is eloquent or well said as some of my colleagues here. But just simply, the reason I'm going to support this is that for the people that it's important to, it is part of their identity. And for the people who are against this, it's just a matter of their personal opinion. And for me, when you weigh those two things out, you want to support the person, you want to support someone's identity more than you want to support someone's opinion. So thank you.
Alderman Juddy.
So as someone who is neither under forty nor a woman, I still feel a part of this board. You know, I, you know, I kind of, you know, since I'm not a woman, you know, although I am a person. But, you know, right now, you know, we, we allow people to, to be referred to as Alderman or Alderwoman. And I'm sure that if someone wanted to be called Alderperson, we would allow that also. You know, I, you know, I agree with whoever said that this is, this legislation I don't think is really necessary. But I'm going to support it because this is what we're doing now. And I'm sensitive to the people who feel that, that it's necessary to do so. But I also share Alderman Kelly's observations that people have, people who aren't from Nashville, even people who are from Nashville, have trouble understanding what an Alderman means, what it is. And I know when I ran for Alderman and I told people I was running for Alderman, they looked at me quizzically, not knowing exactly what that job was. And the way I explained it was, it's really like being a member of a city council. And so I would, you know, I would support efforts to move us in that direction. I know that we can't do it by ourselves, that we have to get the legislature to assist us in moving in that direction. But, but I would support that. But, you know, I also support this ordinance.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Initially, I was not in favor of it. I like the idea that he did remove the last part of it. But I think back to when I came aboard and Brian was here. And I remember he went around and he asked each one of us what did we choose, you know, and some said Aldermen, some said Alderwomen. But what, what I liked was the fact that he, as the chairperson or president, you know, really took the time to talk to us about what we want. And it wasn't a male telling us about these things. He was asking, what, how did you feel about it? For example, when I ran, I ran to serve on the Board of Aldermen. And that's the way, you know, my conversation was with people that I am running for the Board of Aldermen, to serve on that board. So I never had a problem with whether it was Alderwoman or Aldermale or whatever. I went pretty much by what was in the books. And it never bothered me because I knew who I was. And as far as the girls, little girls out there, they know who each one of us are without a doubt in their mind. They don't need to be, a name is definitely not going to tell them it's okay or not okay. But I will support it. But I really didn't think we needed legislation for that because I think that everyone in this board would never have a problem with someone being called Alderperson, just as we didn't have a problem with people coming to board and wanting to be Alderwoman.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah. Again, I really don't think we need legislation to do this. And we could very easily call people like we did with Alderwomen. But because of the feelings associated behind the movement of, of to be all inclusive, and because I do support the fact that if they want to be called Alderwomen or Alderperson, I didn't have a problem with that. I just didn't think we need legislation. But I will support the legislation.
So I just want to chime in on this. I, as Alderman Kelly did say, that this board hasn't always looked this way. I mean, I, one term, I was the only woman on the board. And it was all, you know, middle-aged and older white males.
Alderbros.
Alderbros. They weren't really bros, though. But, you know, and I appreciate, you know, this coming forward. Does it need legislation? Maybe not, but I'm going to support it. I think it's a good idea. I think we should move forward with this. But I have to say, this board did not always look like this. And I'm very happy that it does right now. So.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, yeah. Being definitely afraid of sensitivity training, I think I'll change my vote. As club to that now.
Okay. So the motion before us is, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Lu.
I just wanted to, a couple of things. I feel as though I never had any thought that I couldn't be Alderwoman. It never occurred to me. And no one gave me the impression that it was a surprise. And I guess, I feel as though this is already in effect and taking place. And I guess I've had a sense that we don't enact ordinances unless there's a need. I'm under the impression that that's an overriding idea. And, but I don't see a problem with, I mean, I do, I do think it should be tucked somewhere a little bit different in the code because I don't understand how putting it in with Legislative Assistant makes it easy to reference. I, it's ten two, right? Section five, ten two. And in the code, that's just, that reference is Legislative Assistant, I think. So I thought that, I think fifteen or fourteen would make more sense. That's all.
You'd have to talk to Corporation Council. I.
Is there a question?
Is there a question?
If you, if you want it to be, I don't know, if you want it to be visible or found or at least don't tuck it into Legislative Assistant information.
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure. I'm not sure I understand because it says it's, it's in the chapter that pertains to the Board of Aldermen, Article two, General Provisions. So it's, it's just a provision of the board.
Are you all set, Alderman Lu? Okay. So the motion before us is for final passage of ordinance twenty dash zero zero five as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Ordinance twenty zero zero five is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of ordinance oh twenty zero zero seven, removing the handicapped parking space in front of seven to nine Lemon Street.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm sorry. Removing the handicapped parking space in front of seven dash nine Lemon Street. May I just speak to it?
Alderman Cleve.
The reason that I brought this forward was because there is a handicapped parking space that has not been used for a very long time. Parking went, checked it, and made sure that this wasn't packed. But the neighbors aren't able to use this parking space because it does have a handicapped person that it had been awarded for. This is kind of a concern that I had when I asked for another place to get a handicapped parking space, is that when they know we need it, we have no way of knowing. And I keep bringing this forward, and we do have to do something on it. Finding a way of, you know, put a sunset on it, these type of legislation, or that every year they have to come in and re-ask for it, make that the sunset once a year or something. But anyways, in light of that, that we don't have that, I'm asking to remove the handicapped parking space in front of seven dash nine Lemon Street.
Discussion. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. As the Chairman of Infrastructure, I'd like to thank Alderman Cleve for mentioning that. Throughout the city, and it's going to really depend upon the good people if they see it, such as the situation where there may have been a disabled child, and that sign went up in the neighborhood. And now the child has moved out of the city and has children on their own. And the sign is still there, perpetual. There's no real record right now. I mean, perhaps maybe we should have, like Les suggested, you know, a sunset clause to revisit it. But it would take somebody to do that. And right now, it doesn't exist. So I'm going to rely and make the public service announcement to the good people out there. If you see an oh sign that is no longer germane to the situation, that it was well-intended to be put up, to please call the Public Works Department. I think that's a good start right there. And we can start taking some of these down. And then that would have, it might increase the effectiveness for the ones we do need, so.
Alderman Lopez.
I guess, just a question to Alderman O'Brien. Wouldn't this be something we could ask the parking study to do while they're studying parking? I assume they were going to do an inventory of parking spaces.
I, I can't add it without seeing the complete parameters, but I think we could bring this up. But I think it can be done. I will see if we can definitely work towards that goal.
If, if he would prefer, I could represent Alderman O'Brien on March seventeen. Maybe otherwise, of course.
Yes, I, I unfortunately had to cancel one cultural event that day to, to attend the meeting.
The motion before us is for final passage of ordinance twenty dash zero zero seven. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance twenty dash zero zero seven is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions. First reading of resolution R twenty oh eighteen, relative to the transfer of $25,000 from Department one ninety-four contingency, account seven zero one zero zero general contingency to Department one oh nine Civic and Community Activities, accounting classification fifty-six, outside agencies for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashville Association for the Elderly. Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harry Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty zero nineteen, authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into contracts with Nashville Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson, Town of Merrimack, and the Plus Company for transit services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Loz, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty zero twenty, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $69,566 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harry Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty oh twenty-one, establishing an information technology study committee.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty zero twenty-two, relative to the transfer of $50,000 from Department one ninety-four contingency, account seven zero one zero zero general contingency into fund sixty-five hundred property and casualty fund, account six eight three six zero loss prevention.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Gathright. Going to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of resolution twenty dash zero zero two. As the mayor indicated, this money is much needed for the preventing, hopefully, some of the coronavirus spread that might go through the city. So.
Second reading of resolution R twenty Second reading of Resolution R 20022, relative to the transfer of $50,000 from Department 194 Contingency Account 70100, General Contingency, into Fund 6500 Property and Casualty Fund Account 68360, Loss Prevention.
Motion, Alderman Lopez.
I was going to ask, should we vote on that, or is it implied? Because without objection, I think we should probably vote on it. Suspending the rules to allow for a second reading?
No, so without objection, no one objected.
Okay.
I have a point of order.
Alderman Jettie, point of order.
Did you mean to have a second reading of O 22? Or were you talking about suspending the rules to allow the introduction of O 23?
No. Suspended the rules for a second reading of O 22 this evening. That's the money the mayor had asked for at the beginning of his meeting? This applies for the coronavirus and all the additional materials that the city is going to need to...
Okay. I thought 23 was...
That's coming.
That's good.
That's coming.
Can I just object, then, so we vote?
Can you object to what?
To not voting on it. Frankly, if we're going to talk about, like, setting aside our responsibilities as Alderman to oversee budgetary items for an emergency, we should make it very clear that we know what we're doing when we do it, rather than there being confusion among board members about whether we just suspended the rules or didn't.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to be recognized with a motion of final passage of R 2022, and if I may speak to my motion.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. And I appreciate my colleague, Alderman Lopez. But I think as we all watch the news, we're living in very unique times right here with this coronavirus. And I think what the mayor is asking, and not to put words into your mouth on this, but I think the citizens of Nashville want us to be prepared if something should happen. Looking at the dollar amount, it's $50,000. But that's short money if it should ever really hit and force into the city of Nashville. So I think in order to prepare for this, I'm willing to support the mayor's to delegate this and to have it at the ready in case we need to get into defeat the coronavirus. If we posture on this, by the time we meet as a board and try to approve it, it may be too late. So I'd much rather think like the boys go and be prepared and get ready for this and approve this right now and have it ready in case it... I hope it never happens, but if it manifests, I want to be prepared. Thank you.
Alderman Clay, and then Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. The money that we're going for this, the account is the contingency account that has $84,750. If we take this 50 out, and then we also spoke about another one that's going forward, for $25,000 over the same account, it would leave us $9,750. If we need more, I'm sure the mayor would write us a check for it, but easily. I just want to make sure that this 50,000... I guess I have a little anxiety that it's not going to be enough, especially hearing all the things that you were talking about, having to miss a purchase for people that would have to work home or...
Well, if we need more, we'll have to come up with another place.
Okay, so we would just take them?
You know, we haven't had a tough winter, so, you know, there are various places where we probably have money that we could potentially possibly use.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
So, in response to the comment about posturing, I was trying to point out that we hadn't actually made it clear what we were doing, and I was concerned that members of the public might see us as not having done this clearly, given that other Aldermen had asked a question. So from my perspective, I would say posturing is just driving right past that. So, Madam President, Madam... Or Mr. Vice President, I guess names don't matter, but whatever. If you guys want to run the meeting that way, that's fine. I just want to make it clear that I just want to make sure that we're following the procedures, because I would hate for us to do this and then somebody to challenge us on how we did it. That's going to be Attorney Bolton's issue to deal with. And I consider it just a matter of protocol within the meeting. When it comes to the actual support for keeping city functioning, the city functioning during a potential outbreak or impairment of services, I don't have any objection.
What do you think I did wrong over here?
I think it would have been good if you had said, without objection, we will suspend the rules, instead of just saying, we're suspending the rules. And then when I pointed out that we didn't do that and could have just had a vote, you both just drove right past it. So it's clear now that what we're doing is what we're doing. But by not doing... By not making the vote on the procedural part, anybody who objects to it on procedural grounds is now being positioned as if they object to being ready for the coronavirus. Instead of just saying, wait, we should have made sure we all agreed to suspend the rules.
Okay. Alderman Lou.
I think if I understand Alderman Lopez correctly, you're just asking for a vote on the... On ruling it to having a second reading. Am I correct?
That's what I was asking for before. I think we can turn and pass that point.
And...
How did we get past it so quickly?
Yes, Attorney Bolton.
I mean, I may have missed it, but apparently Alderman Lopez believes that the president didn't say words to the effect of, unless there's any objection, the rules will be suspended. I thought that's what she said. At least, I'm pretty sure that's what she meant to say. What would have been proper, whether she said that or not, if someone did not want the rules to be suspended, someone of the members of the board, to at that point say, point of order, I would like us to vote on the suspension of the rules. No one did that then. If you don't speak up timely, you've acquiesced, and that acquiescence is the equivalent of a unanimous vote to go along with what the president is proposing. So that happened. Meanwhile, a motion was made for final... Well, the second reading occurred, and then a motion for final passage was made. That's where you are now, to go back a couple steps now to when the rules were suspended. As I say, rightly or wrongly at the time, you've got to raise it immediately. You can't raise it a couple steps down the road.
Point of order, at the risk of interrupting. I did say objection, and that was my purpose. If I used the wrong phrase, and it wasn't clear to the president what I was trying to do, then I apologize, but I was literally trying to say we should object to just having the rules suspended without actually having a vote on it.
These things happen. I'm sure the president will be more careful and more aware in the future.
Absolutely.
But if you're trying to follow the rules, what's before you right now is the motion for final passage of this resolution?
If I might interrupt one more time, I would just say, I was trying not to interrupt, so that's why I didn't push it any further. I probably should have used a better terminology.
Alderman Lou.
My recollection was simply that Alderman Lopez asked, and at that point, the motion was made. Or after that point, the motion was made. So it doesn't seem to me that the motion had been made yet when the objection had come up.
My recollection is the second reading had occurred before either Alderman Lopez or Alderman Jettie indicated any objection. Now, that may be wrong, but I don't really think it matters at this point.
Alderman Dowd.
Relative to what we're doing relative to this ordinance, it was explained in detail by the mayor at the beginning of the meeting on this particular ordinance. So when this came up, it should have been anticipated what we were going to do, that we were going to suspend the rules, get a second reading, and pass this so that he could fulfill what he asked to do at the beginning of the meeting. So I don't think it was any ambiguity as to what we were trying to do with this ordinance.
The motion on the floor is for final passage of Resolution 20-002. Alderman Lou.
I... Thank you. When I have been listening to the mayor, I don't take that as instructions of what we're going to do. I... So... I, you know, I was not prepared for the instructions that will be suspending the rules. I understood it was a request, but I thought it was something that could or would be voted on. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion before, Alderman Kelly.
I apologize. I actually just want some clarity from Attorney Bolton. So if this were to happen again and someone objects, do we not need to wait to be called on? Do we just interrupt and say, I object, in order to get the timing that you were talking about?
The strictly correct way to do it is to say, point of order.
Yep.
Anytime that you hear, if there are no objections, it's proper to say, I object. I do object, or worse, to that effect. And you don't have to be recognized. And the same thing, if you want to raise a point of order, you can raise that without being recognized. And in this case, the president, if we were a committee or something, that would be the chairman, chairperson, chair. Interrupt the speaker and ask the person who called out point of order, what is the point of order? And a point of order should be something that has been done or is being done in violation of the rules. It should not be used just, I disagree. It should be calling the attention of the chair to a transgression of the rules.
Thank you very much.
The motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 20-022. Further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Resolution 20-022 is duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R 20023, relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget for the City of Nashville General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
There being no objection, I will accept the first reading of Resolution 20023. And refer it to the...
Point of order, we're going to...
Budget Review Committee. And schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing for Wednesday, May 20, 2020, at 7:00 PM at Nashville High North Auditorium.
Real point of order, what is O 2023?
The budget.
The budget.
Okay, because I have 2020 right here, so that's why I was confused.
New business ordinances? There's none. I, without objection, would suspend the rules to accept a communication placed on our desk this evening from Larry Budrow, HR Director, regarding UAW professional work schedule and pay practices. Period for public comment. One person has signed up, Stacy Lawton.
Honorable Board, I'm a selectman, Stacy Murray Lawton of Board 4, AD Elm Street, Unit 1. I come before you tonight with one that was a very interesting meeting. Not bad for my... For this type of statement I have to make. My statement is kind of mixed. Little over a week ago, my wife, who's a former selectman in the city, she passed on. And she was kind of looking forward to seeing some of the stuff I might do going forward. And I've been in contact with, like, the Chief of Police, Fight Department, some members of the board, the mayor. She loved this city. She loved this board. And she loved the fact that, at one time, she was... Excuse me, I have a little cough. She loved the fact that, one time when she was a selectman, we called her the ballot box girl. Interestingly enough, in the last primary, when I started my work again as a selectman, I was placed at the ballot box, because I have an Achilles tendon issue. And, you know, it's really sad that I come and I have to tell you that. I also just want to thank the city and Bob Mack and other people at my church. I have a copy of cremation voucher. Though we're not people of very much, you know, money, the City of Nashville was there for us in this time. And I just want to thank the Welfare Department and the city for making such services available to people like myself. With that, now I always try to remain as nonpartisan, but I do want to say that she would be happy that I'm serving as a selectman with this city, should also be happy that I'm also going to run again for state representative. And this... I'm going to run for her, and I'm going to keep my head clear. I've been very fortunate to be offered a second chance as to be a selectman. You know, people recall my past, and I will just say it. In the past, I did call in a bomb threat, unfortunately, to the local hospital. In my past, I committed felonies, and I'm sorry. I've never got a chance to say I'm sorry for 2012. I've never got a chance to say I'm sorry for the bomb threat. I'm sorry. But I thank you for the opportunity to be able to serve within this government again. And hopefully, we can take it to the next level. And I have to shout out to all the city services who helped my wife and I during this time, Fight Department, all the personnel from Agent 4 and the Ladder Company, and the various police officers that have helped with different things. Also, a big shout out to Hartspear Support Center in Nashville. I'm a member there. I'm on the Board of Directors. Hopefully, I'll be running for that board's president soon. But I've also been a guest in their Respite Center. Because of my past, I didn't want to fall apart again. I didn't want to see the news come out where I was going to break the law again or be stupid. But I'm here today, strong, and I'm here, ready to continue to serve this city, because that's what my wife Lisa Lawton would want me to do. I know, you know, this is an odd statement for this board, but I'm not just any individual. So I appreciate this opportunity, and I appreciate this government and the city and all of its services, Bob Mack, Hartspear Support Center. And coming up in May, we're going to have an awesome celebration of life service for her. Selectman Lisa Lawton would only want the best for a service to remember who she was. Though her and I made mistakes, we're good people. And I appreciate the second chance that I've been given to be able to serve this city. And hopefully, a second chance at the state position that I lost that I made history on in 2012. But my hope is that I can try to... Try to, you know, get to serve in that capacity. I'll shut my mouth, and I'll let you finish your meeting, and you have a great night. And thank you for, again, a second chance to serve within this city. Thank you.
Your remarks by members of the board. Do you mind if I let the mayor say a few things first?
Very quickly.
He said it would be quick.
We changed... We changed...
Only one bite of the apple.
We changed the presentation of the budget this year, making it look like, rather than this, and including a lot more information with even some pictures and stuff, so it's easier for everybody to get into it, understand it, and understand what the money is spent on. Yes, we're giving you pictures. Yeah, it'll be easy to understand now.
Wow.
Even Alderman Lopez wouldn't be able to follow.
No, he can't.
All set, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to start, Alderman Tenza, I'm going to start down your end.
Awesome, thank you.
All set. Alderman Lopez.
I want to express my condolences to Selectman Lawton. Lisa was a very strong presence in the community. She was well-liked. There are many, many community events where she's parked there with her wheelchair, she has her little dog. She's going to be greatly missed. I also wanted to say I appreciate the courage that it took to come forward. I know for some of us politicians, you might be like, "What? All of these things just got thrown at us at once?" But it takes a lot to open yourself up in that particular way. It takes a huge amount of courage to admit publicly that you did some things you aren't proud of, and I respect that. I respect that you did apologize, and I admire the strength that you are demonstrating here and your commitment to moving forward. I also appreciate your advocacy for people who are struggling with mental health issues, because sometimes it's difficult, especially when we're dealing with a sudden loss, or we don't know exactly what is going on around us, to act the way that the public expects us to. I think you're a very good champion for that. You're wearing your heart on your sleeve, and I think this board appreciates that.
Alderman Clemmons.
My colleague Alderman Lopez said it probably better than I could, but let me give you my deepest condolences, and I accept your apology.
Alderman Kelly.
I also wanted to thank you for your comments. Definitely a lot of courage to get on them and share what's going on and what you can accomplish with the people, so I'm sorry for the loss of your life, I can imagine what you're going through. But I also appreciated your comments at the beginning around the title changes. I'm glad we were able to pass that. It's a small victory, but it does, you know, it does have a...
Alderman Clay.
I think here, I actually would like to wish I could...I'm sorry, dear, I know it's not easy to listen. I also just wanted to make a comment about the budget and everything that the mayor shared with us, and I know that the administrative director's been working very hard on the healthcare issues and trying to do everything she can to get that cost down. I look forward to the budget hearings as we go forward and to see what changes we need to make. I know everybody is trying to cut their budget as much as possible, and it would be our job to cut a little bit. Thank you so much.
Alderman O'Brien.
I would just like to, again, express my condolences. I knew Lisa, and as you know, who she is, and from the O'Brien family, our deepest condolences.
Alderman Gathright.
Same here, Stacy. I have my deepest condolences. I knew Lisa as well. I remember all trips in the car to gather and make it in at the Boy Smith and other places that we have been, so I wasn't aware that she had passed, so I just heard this tonight, so truly sorry.
Anyone else over here? Alderman Smith.
A loss is hard. Thank you for sharing it with us.
Alderman Jettie.
I know that some people will be celebrating the feast day of a minor saint.
It's the high holiday now.
But also, next week, we'll be celebrating the feast day of a giant of the church, a patron of the church, and of course, I'm speaking of Saint Joseph, so to all the people who'll be celebrating the feast day of the minor saint, and for the great patron saint, Saint Joseph. My best wishes.
Stacy, I'm sorry for your loss. I just didn't know what to say. Yeah. And I just want to share with you just that the Arts Commission met today, and they are a couple of things. They have a...they're sponsoring a workshop at National Public Library in April 1st, and it's being run by Ginny Lutbe, who's the Director of New Hampshire State Council on the Arts, and it's how to advocate for arts in your community. And they're redoing their Arts and Culture Plan, and Community Music School is also holding a great concert with their staff and students, and also Aces and Aids at Alpine Row on April 18.
Without objection, I would like to apologize to Alderman Lopez.
I checked. No apologies necessary.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. I'll try harder next time. Stacy, I to send my condolences to you. I know that it was a terrible loss for you, but, you know, we're proud of you getting up here and speaking about your future, and I wish you well. You bet. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Okay. We've received the Bible of the Holy Grail on the budget. You all should have received with a cover memo the schedule for the budget reviews for the different departments. We will also be having other budget meetings to discuss things referred to budget, because these tend to be complete evenings. Also, we're changing a few things this year. The one thing is John Griffin is putting together, he and I put together some notes on, especially for the new people, on how to interpret the different colored pages in the book. The other thing that's going to be done is Mr. Griffin and Mr. Burnett are going to discuss all the revenues at one time. As you recall, in the past, we had, when we came to a department, we would talk to the appropriations and the revenue separately on each department. We're not doing that this year. We're only going to be talking about the appropriations, and there'll be more coming out at the first budget meeting. Also, it should be a date, because these change. You know, the city keeps moving, and things happen, and things change, so always be sure that you have the latest version. And it's time to study the book and...oh, the other more important thing is, if you have a question that you want to ask one of the department heads from any of the departments in this city, please ask that question through Donna, and when the answer comes back to Donna, she will share it not only with the budget committee, but everybody on the board. I would prefer and sort of insist that you don't go directly to those departments individually, because everyone should have the same information as we go through the budget. All right? And if you have any questions, just let me know.
The committee announcements? Nobody's meeting? Okay. Do I have a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 9:28 p.m. Thank you, everyone.